Ladies and gentlemen, before we begin, please turn off your cellphone and use the silent feature. Please note that today's hearing is being livestreamed on YouTube. Welcome. In accordance with Section 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustments considers application for minor variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw, permissions to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to create new laws. To ensure a fair and timely hearing, I will vet the agenda to determine which applications can be dealt with immediately and which applications require more in-depth review. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda and ask if anyone other than the agent or applicant is present in interest and wishes to address the committee. If there are people in interest, the matter will be held until all non-contested applications have been cleared from the agenda. If your item is held, we strongly advise you to step outside with the interested parties to discuss any outstanding issues. If no person is present in interest, the agent or applicant will proceed with the presentation if required. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into the committee for a decision. Making your submissions. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. When addressing the committee, please come forward to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and file Decision Request Card, which I believe is available at the end of this horseshoe, so that we have correct information for our records. First, the applicant or agent will make a presentation to the committee of the application as submitted. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be allowed to speak. If there are several speakers sharing the same view, please select a spokesperson to present the group's opinion. We want to hear your views, however, covering the same points will not advance your cause. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker at the end of their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant has an opportunity to rebut only the related issues that were raised. The matter will then be taken into the committee for a decision. This will mark the end of all discussion. Please remember to confine your comments to the matters outlined in the application. If you do not agree with the committee's decision, you may file an appeal. Almost all appeals will be dealt by a new tribunal, or semi-old now, called the Toronto Local Appeals Body, or T-Lab. For more information on the T-Lab, please visit their website or their CFA website. Appeal instructions will be included at the bottom of every decision. In order to receive a copy of the committee's decision and to be informed of all appeal proceedings, you must fill out the Decision Request Card referred to earlier. Please include your email address, as T-Lab will be sending notification and appeal updates by email. Please leave your completed form with Deputy Secretary Treasurer, who is our member of her staff, who is seatbelt on my right, before leaving today. Decisions will be mailed within three business days. Now we move forward with the confirmation of last meeting minutes, panel members.
Through you, Madam Chair, I move adoption of the minutes.
Okay. A motion to adopt the minutes has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a second there? Okay, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? Abstain?
I wasn't here, so...
Okay, so Ms. Hayes abstains. Okay, so the minutes have been adopted. Declaration of interest, panel members or staff?
No interest.
Okay, it's not at this time. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any files to be closed today? Are there any applicants who wish to withdraw the application? Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have you received any requests for deferral?
No, I don't have any at this point, but maybe somebody is going to ask.
Are there any agents, applicants, who wish to defer the application?
For a long time.
During his time slot? No? Okay, just before we proceed, please note that the committee will not be entertaining any extensive revisions to the proposals at the hearing today. In the instance that you do have any extensive revisions, we will defer the applications to make sure that all the revisions are accurate and that all interested parties have been notified of the changes. Okay, so now I'll begin with vetting the agenda. Item number one, 337 Queen Street West, do we have the agent or applicant here? Okay, do we have any interested parties? 337 Queen Street West? No. Item number two, 287 Forest Hill Road, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? 287 Forest Hill Road? Item number three, 3 Pauline Avenue, agent or applicant, okay, do we have any interested parties? 3 Pauline Avenue? No. Item number four, 107 Eaton Avenue? Agent or applicant, any interested parties? 107 Eaton Avenue? Item number five, 146 Christie Street, agent or applicant, okay, do we have any interested parties? 146 Christie Street? Number six, 3 Breton Street, agent or applicant? Sorry, 3 Breton Street, agent or applicant? No, not yet. Do we have any interested parties for 3 Breton Street? Oh, the applicant's right there, okay. Do we have any interested parties for 3 Breton Street? No. Item number seven, 455 Sudan Avenue, agent or applicant, okay, do we... Yeah, do we have any interested parties for 455 Sudan Avenue? Item number eight, 90 Ashdale Avenue, agent or applicant? 90 Ashdale Avenue? Do we have any interested parties for this item? 90 Ashdale Avenue? No. Not here. Item number nine, 20 Brookmount Road, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? 20 Brookmount Road? No. Item number 10, 275 Simmington Avenue, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? 275 Simmington Avenue? Item number 11, 20 Badger Avenue, agent or applicant? 20 Badger Avenue? Not here. Do we have any interested parties for this item? Item number 12, 94 Virginia Avenue, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? 94 Virginia Avenue? Item number 13, 85 Clifton Road, agent or applicant? Okay, do we... No. 85 Clifton Road? No agent or applicant yet? Do we have any interested parties for this item? Item number 14, 662 Briar Hill Avenue, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? 662 Briar Hill Avenue? Item number 15, 288 and 288A Gainesboro Road, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? 288 and 288A Gainesboro Avenue, oh, sorry, Road? Item number 16, 78 Summerhill Gardens, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? 78 Summerhill? No. Item number 17, 412 Coxwell Avenue, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties for 412 Coxwell Avenue? Item number 18, 217 Pearson Avenue, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? 217 Pearson Avenue? Item number 19, 32 Witchwood Avenue, agent or applicant? 32 Witchwood Avenue? Do we have any interested parties? Item number 20, 366 Woodbine Avenue, agent or applicant, do we have any interested parties? For 366 Woodbine? Item number 21, 422 Plains Road, agent or applicant, okay, do we have any interested parties? 422 Plains Road? No. Item number 22, 32 Marion Street, do we have the agent or applicant here? Okay, do we have any interested parties? 32 Marion Street? Item number 23, 21 Glenmore Road, agent or applicant? 21 Glenmore Road, agent or applicant? Okay, now, any interested parties for 21 Glenmore? Okay, so I'm just going to go since there are no non-contested items, or sorry, contested items, sorry?
Number 19.
Sorry, which item are you for?
Eight.
Eight, okay. Okay, so you're the agent or applicant?
I'm the agent.
Okay. Okay, so currently, we don't have agents, applicants still for item number 11, 20 Badger Avenue, agent or applicant? 20 Badger Avenue, okay, item number 13, 85 Clifton Road, do you have the agent or applicant? Or any interested parties? Item number 19, 32 Witchwood Avenue, agent or applicant? 32 Witchwood Avenue? Still not here. And then item number 23, 21 Glenmore Road, agent or applicant? Okay, so we'll proceed with item number one, 337 Queen Street West. If we can have the agent or applicant, please come up and introduce themselves. Before you begin, the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We also have the cover letter from the agent.
Great. My name is Andrew Shields. I am from Scott Shields Architects. I'm the agent on behalf of the owner for 337 Queen Street West.
Okay, so before you proceed, panel members, would you like a presentation? Or we'll go directly into questions? We'll go directly into questions.
So, based on your submission, the added GFA is because you're enclosing some space on the third and fourth floor?
It's actually already an existing condition, and as best as we can tell, that seems to have been what's happened prior to us becoming on the file. So to our best knowledge, that's why there's this increase in GFA. But it is an existing condition. We're not proposing to add any extra floor space or any extra built form to the building. Just trying to bring it into conformance with the current zoning.
Okay, thank you.
What about parking deal? Is your parking, you won't provide zero parking?
That's right. So currently, the building is operating without any parking. The existing tenants in the building are fine with that. The owner is also fine with that for future leases on the building. So again, we're just trying to bring this in line with, you know, current zoning standards. We're not trying to decrease the amount of parking that's there. It's currently operating, no parking.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so it's all internal alterations? Okay, no more questions. We're in committee discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. I would be prepared to move a motion if there are no comments from my colleagues. I think that what's being proposed, clearly, it's been in existence. It's an existing condition. The parking, there is transit in the area. I would move approval of the application as I feel it meets the four tests.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a second there?
Second there.
Second, Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Item number two, 287 Forest Hill Road, if you can have the agent or applicant, please come up. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the one photograph of the front of the subject property. We have a CFA decision affecting the subject property. And then we have a six-signature petition in support from various owners on Forest Hill Road, Armby Crescent, and Russell Hill Road. If you can please introduce yourself.
My name is Warner Cramm. I'm the agent for the owner Vanessa Mulrooney.
Okay, panel members, we'll go directly into questions? Yeah, okay, we'll just go directly into questions.
Okay.
Okay, any questions?
Ms. Cramm, I'm concerned about the length of the detached house, 48 meters and variance number four.
Yes, but...
What's there now?
The only, the extension of what's existing is six feet. That's all we're adding to the front of the house, six feet, which is the existing patio area. There's an existing wall at the front. We're enclosing an existing courtyard. That wall is existing at six feet out from the front wall. So that's the length we're adding to the existing building.
Just pulling that front.
Forward, yes, yes. Just for the garden area on the left side of it.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, no more questions? Okay, we're in committee discussion or motion?
I think that the application is, although on the surface, note here, the length variance currently really exists. It's just enclosing a courtyard and bringing that one wall up on the one side. So, in my opinion, it's minor. And if there's no further comments from my colleagues, I'd be prepared to bring them up.
Okay.
So through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application as I believe the variances as requested are indeed minor and the change would meet the character of the area.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a second there? Second, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number three, 3 Pauline Avenue, if you can have the agent or applicant, please come up. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and then we have a report from TTC. If you can please introduce yourself.
Morning, my name is Martha Sardeska.
Okay. Panel members, we'll just go directly into questions since there's only three variances, okay? Do you have any questions?
Do you know what the existing FSI is for the building without enclosing the front porch? Is it over the .6 that the bylaw allows?
Yes, it is. It's 1.14.
It's 1.14 as we're going to.
1.14. Yeah, no, we are going to, yes. And so we're going to enlarge the square meter of, the square footage of the house by only 10 square meters, even less than 10 square meters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe the existing gross floor area is 200.67 meters squared.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, no more questions. We're in committee discussion.
So I think this is extremely minor in nature and is quite appropriate. I'd be prepared to move approval if there's no...
Go ahead.
Seconded.
Okay. So a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson, second by Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you very much. Item number four, 107 Eaton Avenue, agent or applicant, please come up. We have a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have email correspondence from community planning. And then we have a staff report from driveway management and transportation services. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
My name is Kurt Schmidt. I'm the agent.
Panel members, would you like a presentation or questions?
Yeah, I think I need a presentation on this one, Mr. Schmidt.
Okay, so two-car detached garage.
So you have the site plans in front of you. So it's a two-car garage on a corner lot. The majority of the homes actually have their garages open onto the laneway. This corner lot, which is typical of the adjacent corner lots, is going to have, we're proposing to have the opening to the side. You can see it's an older survey from the 80s. There used to be a garage, and that's the exact same location. It was torn down by previous owners, but it was there before.
Is it the same size as your proposal?
It's slightly longer, but not with regards to the variances. So the setbacks are very similar to what we're proposing. The setbacks in this particular neighborhood, in this street, the garages are generally touching each other, hence the side lot and rear lot setbacks that were requested. The length of the parking space is sufficient for the owner's vehicles. It would also be sufficient for a Honda Accord, a Toyota Camry, Toyota Corolla. The city requirement for parking space wouldn't be sufficient for a Suburban, for example. So we're proposing what's being asked for, with the length of the parking space is appropriate for this application.
Okay, so now you're trying to respond to the transportation report?
I did not see a transportation report.
Okay, so basically, they object to parking variances as spacers are substandard in length? Or they asked us to, upon approval, to include a condition to contact driveway management to obtain permit for any proposed landscaping?
There already is a curb cut. The landscaping is existing, and the paving is existing. I can get you a picture if you like.
So in terms of the substandard size, length of the parking space, or if you can just speak to that again?
So the owner's vehicle will fit in the garage as it's been proposed. If you look at the length of standard family-sized vehicles, most family vehicles will fit in the proposed parking spot length. As far as access, it's just square access. So we don't actually need a longer parking spot, not like inside of a condo building or something like that where the parking spot actually would overhang into a driveway area or a walkway area. So for that reason, we think the parking spot is sufficient. This is the existing landscaping, the existing curb cut. We're not proposing to make any changes to that aspect of the boulevard.
Okay, panel members, any questions? Okay, no more questions. We're in committee discussion or motion?
I think the applicant has made a clear case that the produced length is appropriate for his use and for the use of the site as a typical residential. So, and I don't think transportation has articulated any specific objection. They just, they want the standard upheld because they want the standard upheld. So I'm prepared to move approval.
Are you going to include the condition?
That he contacted.
Maybe that's just advisory.
Yeah.
Okay, so no condition, it's just a motion, okay? So a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a second there? Second by Ms. Omen, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Okay, thank you very much. Item number five, 146 Christie Street, if you can have the agent or applicant, please come up. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a CFA decision affecting the subject property. We have historical impact information from the agent. And then we have a staff report from Transportation Services. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Leo Tang. I'm from David Carter Architects, representing 146 Christie Street. Beside me is the owner, Dr. Joseph Aliva.
Okay, panel members, there are two variances. Would you like a presentation or go directly into questions? We'll just go directly into questions. Any questions?
How long has the unit been there?
So the impact records that you have in front of you date back to, prior to 1978 at least. But further research has shown that the existing third dwelling unit on the ground floor has existed all the way back to the 1950s.
Okay, any other questions?
Madam Chair, I think because we have existing situations here, I don't think there's any significant changes to the neighborhood or to the community. And so I'm satisfied that it has met the four tests. And I would like to move a motion if my colleagues have no further questions.
Okay, panel members, nothing to add, so?
I would just add that it appears that the number 157 across the street has three units. It has three mailboxes. So I would be prepared to second Mr. Russell's motion because it's, I think it is, it's the neighborhood.
Okay.
I move for approval?
There's a condition, yeah, for...
Rightway management.
...transportation, November 13th report.
Yeah. Rightway management.
Are you aware of the report or no?
No, I'm not.
It's actually, you know what, it doesn't, it doesn't have a condition. It's based where? I don't, is it...
This report by November 13th?
Yeah, so I'll give you the report, yes. It specifies that excessive paving on city boulevard must be restored. Existing curb cut restored to match one-car garage plus driveway. You want to see it?
Yeah.
So I'll let you see it.
Do you move anything?
I believe there's excessive paving, right, on the...
So I just spoke to the owner, and I mean, there hasn't been any modifications to the existing site for at least, would you say more than...
Basically, it's been done illegally, like there's no permit for it, I guess? You would have to discuss with transportation, but they're asking us to include that condition, that it be restored.
Okay, okay.
He hasn't done anything since 19...
No, I think it's an existing condition.
It's an existing condition.
But it's overpaid, but it's overpaid. Yeah.
But look how long, my situation is that, look how long it has happened in 1970, 70, 78.
Okay, so we're in committee now. So, Mr. Russell, does your motion still stand without the condition?
My problem about the condition is that since 1978, he said that it has been like this. And so what we're doing, we are putting a condition to restore something that...
Well, we know the unit existed, but I don't know if he said that the...
The pavement?
The driving, I don't know if we heard that part.
Moreover, the approval is new. Whether, whatever the, whether it's an existing condition or not, we are approving it as if it was a new condition. There isn't an application before us for a second parking space here. I would have its own process. I think the condition is appropriate if the application is for a single parking space.
Okay.
Mr. Russell?
I'm going to stand down.
You're not moving a motion?
I'm not moving a motion.
All right, in that case, I'll move the motion. Through you, Madam Chair. I would move a motion to approve the application, including the transportation condition in the November 13th report as I feel what's being requested fits within the four tests and in the context of the neighborhood.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, including the transportation condition. Do we have a second there? Second by Mr. Carlson, all in favor? All in favor, okay. Application's been approved. Okay, thank you very much.
Can I keep this report?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Item number six, 3 Breton Street. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We also have a staff report from Urban Forestry. If you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Rick Bongers, authorized agent on behalf of the homeowners.
Panel members, we'll proceed with questions unless there's a request for presentation. Okay, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have questions.
Okay, so you're building an existing footprint of the first story.
Yes, we are.
Okay. There's several top-ups on the street, right? There's, yeah, this is similar. Okay, any, no? Okay, so no questions, discussion or motion?
I think this is indeed an application that is minor. It certainly fits within the character of other activity that has taken place in the neighborhood. And if there's no other comments from my colleagues, I'd be prepared to move a motion to approve the application subject to forestry condition number one as I believe it is minor and meets the tests under the Planning Act.
Okay, a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes, including a forestry condition. Do we have a second there?
Seconded.
Second by Mr. Russell, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Item number seven, 455 Sudan Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a C of A decision affecting the subject property, and then we have a staff report from community planning. If you can please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Alexandra Racher, and I'm the agent for 455 Sudan.
Okay, panel members, we'll go directly with questions unless you have, unless you'd like a presentation.
The staff report dated November the 14th spoke to certain revisions. Are you looking to revise any of the variances that are before there? So the plans were revised with, it was minor revisions in that the actual footprint of the deck is remaining the same, but they had requested it be brought down to a two-tiered deck to be less invasive to the neighborhood and the neighbors. So the actual projection of the deck and width of the deck remains the same, setbacks remain the same. The maximum platform area increases, and that's only because the stairs in the revised plan are now considered part of that footprint, so they are calculated within the platform area, whereas in the original plan, they were not calculated in.
Okay.
You're seeking 19 meters in platform area now, and by law requires you to have four square meters.
Yes, and that was, it is a main floor deck as well, and I know with the zoning reviewer, that was an issue we were seeing, is considering it a main floor. It is the main floor of the house that was approved above 1.2 meters originally, and so it puts that, because the drop of the property down the side of the house, it puts that main floor deck that much higher.
Okay. Panel members, any other questions? Okay, no more questions. We're in committee discussion or motion?
I know this can be generally uncomfortable with large platforms, but privacy and overlook is the core concern there, and this is relatively very low, really. It's not at a higher floor. I don't actually have a concern here.
I would agree with Mr. Carlson, and with the revisions and working with planning, I think what's being proposed fits within the neighborhood as well.
I agree. I think the two-tiered deck does make sense in the context and does mitigate the privacy concerns.
So would there, in that context, because the plans are different, would there be need to attach the report?
Yeah, so there's the, in the planning report, there's a condition there. So building in accordance with plans dated November 12th.
Yep.
Okay, any other comments? No comments? Any other motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. I would move approval of this application, as I believe to be an appropriate problem for the site and in keeping with the intent of the bylaw.
Including the planning condition?
Including the planning condition dated November 14th, that the rear deck be constructed in accordance with the plans dated November 12th.
Okay, so motion to approve, including the planning condition, has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have Ms. Omen second it? All in favor? Okay, so the application's been approved. Thank you very much. Item number eight, 90 Ashdale Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a C of A decision affecting the subject property. We have two C of A decisions affecting the subject property, and then we have a staff report from community planning. If you can please introduce yourself.
Madam Chair and committee members, my name's Eddie Perez. I'm here on behalf of the owner.
We'll proceed with questions. Okay. Panel members, any questions? I'm closing the front porch.
You've seen the planning report?
We're okay with it. We have no problems.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if there are any comments, but I think this is truly minor. Based on the previous C of A application, I believe the house is already 0.75 times, so it's an increase of 0.05. I think that what's being proposed meets the four tests, is minor, and I would move approval, including the condition in the planning report dated November 15th.
Okay, so motion to approve, including the planning condition, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you very much. Item number nine, 20 Brookmount Road. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a C of A decision affecting the subject property, and then we have a staff report from Urban Forestry. If you can please introduce yourself.
Good morning, I'm Barry Goldman. I'm the architect and agent for the application.
Okay, panel members, once again, we'll proceed with questions unless there's a request for presentation. Do you have any questions?
Landscaping, you're moving from 50% to 21%. What is the present fee?
The existing landscape is roughly equivalent to what we're proposing. There's currently a parking pad at the rear, and essentially what we're seeking to do is replace the existing paved parking pad with a garage that's similar to the adjacent neighbor.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, no questions. We have forestry condition attached to this application. I'll need a motion or discussion?
Approval of this, it meets four tests and subject to the forest conditions. It's minor.
Okay. So motion to approve, including the subject to the forestry condition number two, has been moved by Mr. Russell. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 10, 275 Simmington Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. If you can please introduce yourself.
My name's Jacob Kachuba. I'm the agent for the owner.
Okay, so we'll proceed with questions. Panel members, do you have any questions?
Again, I think this is a very minor application, Madam Chair. I'm not sure if there are any questions from, no questions?
Okay, no questions?
I would be prepared to move a motion. The adjacent homes are longer, there is a building behind. What's being proposed is indeed minor, meets the four tests, and I would move approval.
Okay, so motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Russell. All in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you very much. Item number 11, is the agent here, for 20 Badrow Avenue. Okay, do we have any parties contesting this application? Nope. Okay, so the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the cover letter from the architect. We also have a cover letter from the agent, and then we have correspondence and support from various owners on Badrow, on Badrow Avenue. Okay, including directly adjacent at 18. If you can please introduce yourself.
My name's Wilson Lee.
And I'm Emery DeTecar, we're the homeowners.
We're the homeowners. We don't have our architect here. We've since broken up with him.
Okay. Sorry to hear that.
It's okay.
Okay, panel members, we'll proceed with questions unless?
Your floor space index is almost double. What's the explanation for that?
Well, so we're at a slight disadvantage because we're not here with our architect. As I said, we've broken up with him. We had a disagreement in vision, but this house is, like many of the houses in our neighborhood, exceeds the allowable square footage, and I think that's because there's been renovations over the years. Since we've moved in, we've not actually done anything, and what we're proposing is rather minor. We're proposing to tear down an existing mudroom and just rebuild it because it's rather, it's a bit old, and we want to just put in some more windows so we can kind of see our kids play outside. Well, we have one kid and we have another one arriving very, very soon. And so all we're proposing to do is widen the mudroom by four feet, so we just want to square it off. If you look at the letter that I submitted, there's a picture of our backyard with red lines drawn in that represents the proposed expansion. Sorry, hopefully that explanation was sufficient and the technical.
I believe we also have site statistics, so the existing is at 163 meters squared. So the addition is about three, three meters squared. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, no more questions. We're in committee discussion or motion?
I believe this is indeed minor. It's be squaring off the addition at the back, adding a very modest amount, number of square meters, and if there's no other comments from my colleagues, I would move a motion to approve the application, as I believe it is indeed minor and meets the test of the planning act.
Okay, so motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a seconder?
Seconded.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Russell. All in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item number 12, 94 Virginia Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have a staff report from Transportation Services. If you can please introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Judy Sansale, the architect for 94 Virginia.
Hi, I'm our mighty home vizier, the owner.
Okay. Panel members, we'll proceed with questions. Do you have any questions?
No, I think this is, again, very minor. The transportation does not have an objection. There is no variance for the secondary suite as it's permitted, so I would be prepared to move approval.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Russell. All in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you very much. Item number 13, 85 Clifton Road. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. Do you have the agent introduce themselves?
Good morning, committee. I'm Kyle Kadra, the agent.
Okay, panel members, two variances, so we'll proceed with questions. Any questions? I'm closing the front porch.
I have no questions.
Nope. Okay, no questions. We're in committee discussion or motion?
Extremely minor. I would move approval of the application. It's appropriate.
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Seconded by Ms. Omen. All in favor? So the application's been approved. Thank you very much. Item number 14, 662 Briar Hill Avenue. The committee has in front of us a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and then we have the cover letter from the agent. Okay, panel members, we'll proceed with questions after the agent introduces themselves, since there's only one variance, okay?
My name's Tom Sprague. I'm the agent architect.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions? Constructing the rear deck?
Again, extremely minor, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Minor.
If there are no comments, I would move approval of the application, as this is extremely minor. There's an apartment building to the, to the one side, the right-hand side, across the street, and it's just a very small addition, so I think it meets the four tests, fits within the context of the neighborhood.
Okay, and just before we proceed, I just wanted to highlight, there's two form letters in support, because I forgot to read this. Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have?
I'll second that.
Okay, so Ms. Hayes, second it. Second the motion. All in favor? Okay, so the application's been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, panel members, we'll move forward with item number 15. 288 and 288A, Gainesboro wrote, the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and then we have a cover letter from the agent. If you can please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Robert Hout. I'm with Susan Spiegel, architect, the agent for the owner.
Okay, panel members, we'll go directly into questions unless there's a request for a presentation.
No questions.
No questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, if there are no questions, we're in committee discussion or motion?
I think this is truly minor application. It's to put new cladding on an existing structure. I think the variances being requested are indeed minor, and if there's no further comments from my colleagues, I'd move for approval.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Do we have a seconder?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Carlson, okay, if you can please file a decision request card, unless you have a business card with you?
I don't have a business card. Oh, okay.
Okay.
Did you say Robert Galant?
Robert Hout, H-U-O-T. I think the applicant's the principal of the firm.
The staff just needed for the record.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Seconded by Mr. Carlson. All in favor? Okay, so the application's been approved. Item number 16, 78 Summer Hill Gardens. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. We have the cover letter from the agent. We have clearance letter from Urban Forestry, and then we have email correspondence from Urban Forestry dated November 14th, and then three form letters in support from 76, 80, and 74 Summer Hill Gardens. If you can please introduce yourself.
John Gladky, I'm the agent for the owner.
I'm John Hyde. I am the owner.
Okay, panel members, we'll go directly into questions, sorry? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, we'll just go directly into questions.
I don't have any questions. I don't have any questions.
Okay, just very one-story addition, 15 meters squared. Okay. No questions?
I want to ask, with your addition under the townhouse, what does that fit in with the other townhouses?
There are, sorry, the question is, how does that relate to the other townhouses?
Yeah.
There are already a couple of additions on townhouses nearby, and it's such a small addition that the adjacent owners have no problems with it, as they filed letters.
I believe there's a number of two-storyware additions as well.
There are a number, there's some two-story.
Yeah, versus asking for one story. Okay, no more questions?
No more questions.
Okay, okay, so we're, then I'll need a motion or discussion?
I think what's being proposed is certainly reflective of the built form in the neighborhood. I think the variances being requested are indeed minor. The two adjacent properties are in support, and there's no further comments from colleagues. That would be my motion to approve. I believe it is appropriate. And I would second that.
Okay, so most?
Urban Forestry.
No, just Ravine was okay with it. There's no conditions.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Hayes. Seconded by Ms. Omen. All in favor? So the application's been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number 17, 412 Coxwell Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and then we have the cover letter from the applicant, as well as email correspondence from right-of-way management, and then staff report from Urban Forestry. If you can please introduce yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Sasha Naylor. I am the homeowner. This is my wife, Dina, and we have our two direct neighbors here with us today who are back there in support of the application as well.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
No questions. Okay, so transportation or right-of-way management, there's no objection. Parking entirely on private property. And then we have a forestry condition number one. Okay, no questions?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so discussion or motion?
Madam Chair, in terms of the parking, there are cars parked in front of homes all along the street. I don't think you could fit a car between the houses if you tried. It's too narrow, so I think what's being proposed is reasonable, fits within the context of the neighborhood, and I would move approval, including forestry condition number one.
Okay, so a motion to approve, including the forestry condition, has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Russell. All in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you. Item number 18, 217 Pearson Avenue. If we can have the agent applicant here. Oh, sorry. So 217 Pearson Avenue, the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and then we have a staff report from community planning, and then we have seven form letters in support by various owners/occupants on Marion Street and Pearson Avenue, including the directly adjacent neighbor at 219. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Jonathan Hatch. I'm here representing the owner at 217 Pearson Avenue.
Okay, so once again, we have one variant, so we'll go directly with questions unless there's a request for a presentation. Panel members, do you have any questions?
Just are you aware of the planning report?
We are. We're in support of the condition.
Okay. Okay, thank you. No further questions. Okay, any questions, no questions?
No, this is very minor, Madam Chair.
Okay. So discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. If there's no other comments from my colleagues, I'd be prepared to move a motion to approve the application as I, subject to the condition in the planning report dated November 14th as I believe this is indeed minor and meets the test under the Act.
Okay, so a motion to approve including the planning condition has been moved by Ms. Hayes, second by Ms. Omen, all in favor. So the application has been approved. Thank you very much. Item number 19, do we have the agent applicant here? 32 Witchwood Avenue. Still not here, okay, so we'll just hold that down. Item number 20, 366 Woodbine Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. And then we have form letters in support by various owners, sorry, by 364 Woodbine Avenue. Okay, if you can please introduce yourself.
Morning, I'm Jay Smith, the Agent for 366 Woodbine.
Okay, panel members, once again, one variant, so we'll go directly with questions unless you want a presentation. So I believe the existing is 182 meters squared, right, FSI?
Yeah, the existing FSI is .9. And we aren't increasing the footprint of the house, we're just extending over the existing second floor.
Okay.
Would there be a privacy issue there?
No, we have no deck, we're looking straight back with no side windows.
Okay.
Okay, no questions? In committee discussion?
Madam Chair, there are a lot of additions. I don't think that what's being proposed, it fits with, within what's surrounding it. So I, I would be prepared to move approval of the application as I feel it's minor, meets the four tests.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Ms. Hayes, all in favor? So the application has been approved. Thank you very much. Item number 20, 422 Plains Road?
20?
Sorry, 21. So the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. And then we have a staff report from community planning. If you can please introduce yourself.
My name is Trevor Gain, I'm the Agent here on behalf of the Owners. I have a 12 signature petition I would just like to hand in.
Okay. Thank you.
And if you require a presentation, just before, there's a little bit of a housekeeping. There's a error in the wording of a variance, variance number one. It's describing a rear yard setback for the auxiliary structure. That should actually be side yard setback. The rest of it is written fine, but the 2.84 is from the west side lot line. Which is that first sentence, it should read side yard as written in the zoning review. I'll put, here's the zoning review on the overhead.
So it's right on our document.
Okay.
No, it's incorrect. It's a, it should have been changed to side yard when the, it was west side yard.
Sentence and description.
Side yard, oh, okay.
So we went through the neighbor, that's how we found it when we were talking to the neighbors, specifically number seven to the direct north. And we just confirmed that the drawings as the 2.84 is the side yard off of Treadway, not from his property. No objections, but just so there's no issue going forward.
What is the property that's in the back of your, of the subject property on Treadway? Do you know what address that is?
Number seven.
Number seven? Okay. So we have support from 424 Plains Road, so directly adjacent. And then 426, I guess that's not directly adjacent, but. Okay, panel members, any other questions?
Are you okay with the planning report?
We're fine with it, typical condition for a situation like this.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, no questions. We're in committee discussion.
I think with the planning condition, this is appropriate to the site. And prepared to move approval, there's no further comment.
Uh, yep, we can go ahead.
So through you, Madam Chair, move approval of this application as it includes desirable development for the site.
Including the planning.
Including the planning condition.
In the November 15th report. Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson, including the planning conditions, condition, sorry, in November 15th report, second by Ms. Omen, all in favor. Sorry. Okay, application has been approved, thank you. Item number 22, 32 Marion Street. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. And then we have a staff report from community planning. If you can please introduce yourself.
I'm Michael Slifka, the owner of the.
Okay, so we'll proceed with questions since there's only one variance. Panel members, do you have any questions?
No.
No.
You're aware of the planning report?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Okay, no questions, we're in committee discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair, I think this is indeed minor, meets the four tests. So I would move approval including the condition in the planning report dated November 14th.
Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen, including the planning condition. Do we have a seconder?
I will.
Okay, Mr. Carlson, all in favor? So the application has been approved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 23, do we have the agent here? For 21 Glenmore Road? Nope. Okay. Sorry. We're 23. What items are you waiting for? Just observing? Okay. And then the two, observing as well? Okay. So we'll go forward with item number 19. Is the agent here for 366 Woodbine Avenue?
No.
No, sorry, Witchwood Avenue. Okay, no, there's no email or?
No, we can go ahead.
Well, we just slow it down for a sec because we thought it just catch up.
Sure.
Sure.
So why don't we?
We can take maybe 10, five-minute break?
10 minutes.
Or 10 minutes?
That's enough time.
Till 10 o'clock?
Yes.
We've emailed all the agents, so they'll hopefully go from running in and not lose.
So if we break till 10, is that enough time?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll break till 10. 10:00. Okay. Okay. Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay, so we'll hear item number 32, Witchwood Avenue. The committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevation. And no agent or applicant or owner has shown up to the hearing. Panel members, I guess we'll just do, go directly into discussion. So the depth, 0.03 meters. The existing FSI is at, already at 175.92 meters squared.
I, I just have one question maybe to Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer. On A101, it's showing a proposed one-story garage, but there's no mention of a garage. Does that mean it complies basically?
Okay. Right. And they're also building on top of an existing addition. A307, what's that? Okay.
Other than that, Madam Chair, it's, it's a straightforward application.
Okay, and there's no parties contesting the application or nothing has been submitted. So panel members, discussion or motion?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think what's being proposed fits within the context of the neighborhood, meets the four tests, and I would move approval.
Okay, so, so a motion to approve has been moved by Ms. Omen. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Ms. Hayes, all in favor. So the application has been approved. Item number 23, 21 Glenmore Road. So the committee has in front of us plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, elevations. And once again, neither the owner or the agent showed up for the public hearing. And we have no, no opposition on file. Okay, so, so we're a two-story addition, we're covered ground floor deck. The existing FSI is at 99 meters squared.
It also looks like a couple houses down that they've done the same thing. So this looks very similar.
Yeah, two-storyware additions, yeah. Okay. Okay. Okay, so a motion to approve has been moved by Mr. Carlson. Do we have a seconder? Carlson, second by Mr. Russell, all in favor. So the application has been approved. And that marks the end of our morning time slot. At 10:05.